City Council of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, be held on Monday, November the 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in the City Council chambers. Our invocation tonight will be from Reverend Dr. Christopher Maddox from the Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pull the button towards you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Most gracious Father, Father God, we come to you this evening, Father, as humble as we know how. First of all, Father God, I just ask that you just bless me, Lord. As I come before you and as I bring prayer before you, Lord, representing my church and representing my community, Father God, I ask that you lend us your ear. Father God, we just ask that you just continue to watch over us as a community, Father God. Father God, I ask that you just continue to bless us, lead us, and guide us in the direction that you see fit for us, Father God. Father God, we know that we live in troubled times right now, Father God, and we ask for your protection, your covering on us, Father God. We ask that you protect those, most of all, who are least fortunate in our community, Father God. Father God, I ask that you bless the servicemen that keep our city clean, the streetsmen, and the trash people, Father God. I ask that you watch over them, Father God. Father God, I ask that you watch over our police officers, Father God, as they go about their daily duties, Father God, keeping our city safe, Father God. Father God, I just ask that you bless our community leaders here, Father God, those who are seated at the table, those you have placed in council for us, Father God, and we ask that they're good stewards with what you've given them, Father God. I ask that you touch each and every one of the council members, Father, that are represented here today, Father God, and we ask that you bless their families. We understand that it's not easy to take leadership roles, Father God. It's not easy to be the one responsible for the things that go on in a house, in a town, in a community, Father God. And I just ask that you just bless our community leaders, Father God, as they continue to lead us and guide us. These things and all things, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right.
All right, thank you, Reverend Maddox.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Oh, she's here, okay. All right. Roll call, Clark Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Massingham?
Here.
Councilman Depew?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Here.
Mayor Cornman?
Here.
We have seven present.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. See none. Item six, our citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. We have Phyllis Baker. Come on up. Go ahead, give us your name and address for the record.
Phyllis Baker, 3500 Marble Hill Road, Poplar Bluff, Missouri. Okay. The vote to approve the establishment of the downtown CID was previously tabled. Because it was not taken from the table before the end of the next regularly scheduled meeting, it's my understanding that this item is no longer pending. Would you know if that is correct? Would you know?
You're asking me for a legal opinion?
On Roberts' rules of?
Yes. It was tabled indefinitely without a date certain, and that means that it will remain on the table until by an affirmative vote of the council that it is brought back. But there is no statute of limitations on that. It can be brought back at any time.
Okay. Will it be considered new business?
No. Once it was workshopped and placed on the voting agenda, then it was tabled at that point, then it comes back off the table if there is an affirmative vote to do that as an action item.
Okay. Does it usually go to workshop before a vote?
It does, and it did. This matter was workshopped previously, and then by action of this council, it was tabled, tabled indefinitely without a date certain. So it's already been workshopped.
Probably my memory is incorrect, but I was thinking it was introduced and tabled the same night.
It was workshopped and then tabled to prevent it from being moved to an action item the following meeting, but it was workshopped.
That night?
That night, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I guess then that's decided. Will there be any public discussion tonight regarding the CID?
No, I don't believe there'll be any public discussion. Like you said, it'd already been workshopped, but like you mentioned, it's tabled currently. So in order to take it off the table, you'd have to have a majority vote to even discuss it up here or vote on it. So it would take, you know, a majority vote.
So you'll take a vote, too?
If somebody makes the motion to take a vote, it may not ever even come off the table. It may not even get voted on.
Oh, okay.
That's correct. Right, Mark?
Yes, and to answer your question specifically, even if it's taken off the table, it becomes an action item, there's still plenty of discussion among council members. There just isn't any additional discussion or input from the public.
Okay. And just to clarify, I just want to clarify, the only discussion that the public made was at the meeting when it was tabled.
That is correct.
Yeah, I didn't think I missed a meeting. So there was a meeting, it was proposed, there was discussion, it was workshopped, it was tabled, and now it may be ready for a vote.
Yes, the public meeting was the workshop, and there was extensive discussion from the public, both in favor and against, at that workshop meeting. Instead of voting on it that night, the council decided to table it, to think about it for a while. At the point that it was tabled, it ended any further public discussion, and now it is on the table to potentially be brought off the table for a vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So, Mr. Attorney, when we get to item CC, so we would have to have a vote to take the item off the table before we would ever have a first reading, is that what you're saying?
That is correct. There has to, in order, the matter is currently on the table, and it stays on the table until there is a motion. And the motion, by the way, has to be made by a council member that moves to place it on the table, and then it has to be seconded, and then if there is a vote to move it off the table, then it becomes item CC. If those steps are not accomplished, then it remains on the table, just as it was put on the table in the previous meeting.
Thank you for asking that, Ms. Baker, because I was a little confused, too.
All right, that'll take us to item seven, our workshop items for discussion. Item A, Ms. Brenda Corona will appear before the City Council to request approval for open containers on city-owned property located across from the Black River Coliseum for Millifest to be held Saturday, November 7th, 2025. Ms. Corona, you want to come on up?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Brenda Corona, and I own Samari Grill in Kewley, Missouri.
Okay.
The lady who is doing the Millifest, she asked me if we can, you know, bring the alcohol for that day. I don't know what, I mean, what I need to do for that. Usually we do like Cinco de Mayo, but it's different because we do it in our place. So I don't know what do I need to bring here, like, what do you guys require to bring here?
Well, can you tell us a little bit about Millifest?
Millifest, I think they celebrate every year because her daughter died.
Okay.
It's been, I think, six or seven years ago. So they do it every year. So they, I think they're going to have food trucks, they're going to do like games or something like that, and this year is when she asked me to do it. We've been friends for several years, so I don't know if you guys let me do it. I mean, we can bring like cups with lids, if that helps, or I don't know why you guys recommend it. Because usually for our restaurant, for to-go's, we do it in like a plastic bag, and it's like a hole, and you put the straw in there. I mean, we can do that, or we can do the cups with the lid. So I don't know, like, if you guys probably recommended something different, so that way people is not just drinking and, you know, so I don't know.
Didn't we do this for someone once before, some event downtown?
I think we've had, yeah, similar to this.
So this will be on the parking lot across from the Coliseum?
Yes, it's going to be here, I think it's Saturday, this coming Saturday, in the morning from 11:00 to 5:00 or 6:00. That's what she told me.
I'm willing to give it a try.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it.
Are there any legal issues with that?
No, sir, Mr. Councilman, we have done this on numerous times in past years for various organizations, and there are no legal issues, provided that the council, by an affirmative vote, approves it.
Well, I would like to add one thing, though. I would like to not have any glass at all.
No, it will be just plastic.
Okay.
Yeah, even we bring our margaritas, it's a plastic container. Everything's going to be in plastic, and we don't use glass, so.
I'm okay with it.
About what time would this wrap up?
I'm sorry?
What time would this end, on Saturday, roughly?
Well, she told me it was going to start 11:00, so I was, and it's going to be over like around 5:00 or 6:00, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be just the morning and?
Yeah, just a daytime event, okay.
Oh, yeah.
What is her restaurant? You said you have a restaurant, what is it?
Yes, it's a Mexican, it's a Mexican restaurant in Kewley.
In Kewley, okay.
Yes.
Is it the old store building?
Yes, it's like, it was a fish place before.
Yeah.
And then we opened it three, three and a half years ago. So, yeah.
I had a question.
Yeah.
So how much of the parking lot is the event going to take up, and will there be a designated area for the open containers?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I think they're going to tell me where I can put my stand and my table.
Councilman, it's only for the premises of the event, so you can't take those containers off of what would be the premises, which would essentially be the parking lot.
I think you could say, how much of the parking lot?
How much?
The center lot? The center parking lot.
Okay.
Okay. Are you expecting like dozens of people or hundreds of people, or is there?
Well, I don't know, it just depends, because every year is different, so, I mean, it can be a good crowd of people.
So is it like a beer garden type of thing, where there's a designated area for the open containers?
Probably say yes, I don't know. I don't know how they did it last year. I was not here last year.
You're just a vendor, right?
Yeah.
She's just a vendor.
I'm just a vendor, I don't know, like?
She's the one that's going to be serving the open containers.
Yeah, but it's not her event, so she's not going to be set up.
So we don't know, then?
No, we don't.
So do we need just a general consensus? We need not?
Yeah, it's a motion.
Oh, so we don't vote on it until next time, okay. I mean, we move it.
No, it's this side.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, so we need to move it to tonight's voting session.
No, it's not on there, but it's just an approval. It's an approval, but it is a motion to approve, so you want to make that decision.
Yes, I move that we approve the open container event.
Thank you, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I would like to make one comment, though. Whenever something like this is brought to us on one day, and then we're expected to vote on it that night, I'm usually disinclined to vote for something that's, you know, we haven't had previous knowledge of or been able to review it. So unless there's some documented emergency where, you know, it's presented to us and voted on that night, I'd much rather have some previous notice of what's going to be on the agenda, that's all.
Okay. Are you a no vote?
No, that's fine. I.
Okay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, appreciate you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Item B, the City Council will consider entering into an airport infrastructure grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the design services for the construction of two bay box hangars at the Poplar Bluff Regional Business Airport. Manager Nodelle to present.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ongoing project, build two box hangars out at the airport to meet the demand for additional storage for aircraft, and this project has been underway for quite a while, but we do need, we do need action for the airport infrastructure grant agreement. This is a federal aviation administration grant that is administered through MoDOT, and this grant will fund design and engineering services for the construction at the airport. Standard agreement, this grant amount is $184,190 for those services, and the local match is 5%, which comes to $9,691. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Make a motion to move this to November 17th voting session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will consider a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to abandon Drew subdivision and vacate Tower Drive to expand the parking area for Temple Baptist Church located at 1813 Baron Road. City Planner James Sisk to present.
Temple Baptist has acquired this piece of property. It is just to the east of the church property, and many of you may know it as the, that's property. Anyway, when they bought this property and wanted to come put a parking lot on it, it was discovered that there was actually a platted subdivision for the acreage. So to just clear everything up, we've sent this to P&amp;Z to vacate that subdivision and the street right away that was there as well. The only recommendation we really had was to make sure that the utility easements that exist on the property remain in effect.
So what does that actually mean to abandon the?
So this was a platted subdivision in the 50s, was never, there was one home built on it, and I believe 1954, and it's the only home that's remained on that property ever since.
It's still there.
So it just, it does away with the subdivision that was adopted by the city at that point, so it just, it basically erases the property back to one parcel.
So is it, is the property then rezoned?
No, there is no need to rezone it since it's adjoining the property, the church property, which is also residential property the way it's owned, so there's no need to rezone it to match.
So Temple Baptist is owned residential?
Yes. And a church can basically exist on any zoning the city has, so there's no need to change any of that.
So there's adjacent property owners there on, what is it, ZIM?
Correct. We had a few of those come to planning and zoning. They are all in favor of, we had no opposition to this in any way.
Okay, was there, okay, so all the property owners in were notified, I think there's a certain?
I believe we had three come to planning and zoning, they were all in favor of, and we heard from no one else.
They were all notified, though, of the change?
Yes, we send out letters to any property owners that are adjacent to or within a certain footage from the property.
Oh, okay. The easements are going to be, remain in place for the sewer and the water?
Yes, there's a sewer easement across the, what would be the northeast side of the property on the edge that feeds to ZIM Avenue, and there's a water line that actually will belong to the church, but there's also an easement there in the driveway, so.
So will those easements be allowed to be paved over?
There shouldn't be any reason to pave over the one to the northeast, and then the other one is already under asphalt, so it doesn't, there's no change of what.
So they don't have to keep those clear?
No.
Okay. Was there any consideration of potential development of that as single-family housing, you know, because I understand that the property lots in good neighborhoods are kind of hard to come by for new development. This one's already platted.
That would have strictly been up to the church, and they purchased the property to use for their activities and parking, so that would have had nothing to do with us.
So they could build houses on it?
No, not after this is vacated.
No, I mean, now. It could, it could be, it's currently zoned and platted for a road and houses, right?
Correct.
So.
Again, this has been something that was on the books since, I believe, it was 1952, and it was never acted on. It's been single-family owned since the mid 50s, so.
Right, so if we change this to a single property there, that precludes future development of the houses and the street in there.
Unless they, for some reason, wanted to come back with another plat, they'd have to start from scratch, so.
The church owns it, so.
Yeah. This is already a purchased property. This is not a, if it passes, they'll purchase it. They've already done it, there's already a parking lot on it, and it was brought to us to vacate the rest of it.
Oh, there already is a parking lot there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. All right, thank you.
Are they good with the easement?
I'm sorry, sir?
Are they good with the easement?
Yes. Again, they're on areas of the property that wouldn't affect anything that they've done anywhere, so.
I make a motion to move it to the voting session to be held tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will consider amending rental fees and rates for the Black River Coliseum and Black River Coliseum Aquatics and Fitness Center. Black River Coliseum Director Greg Smith is here to present.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, we have went through and have made changes to the rates for the Coliseum side and for the aquatics and fitness side as well, for your all's consideration. If there's any questions, be glad to answer any questions there have to be on them.
No, I was at the board meeting on the council rep, and there was extensive discussion, and these rates haven't been raised in a lot of years.
Since May of 2012.
Yeah, so it's definitely time to do something with the way everything has gone up in expenses, in my opinion.
So one question about the one-line item, it talks about the putting down the wood floor.
Basketball floors?
Yeah, for the basketball events. What does it cost to put those floors down and take them back up? Is it more or less than?
It's going to be right, it's $1,200.
What the crawl rate is?
I figured it in for the rate of the amount of people and the man-hours to take it up and down.
And then months, we've been paying up and down dollars to post that up and down. By the time it's set up or something, and tear down the floor, and then what?
Correct. When we have to do it with, by ourselves, yes. If we have help from the Sears youth kids, that is less people that we have to provide for.
I hadn't seen the cost go down that much, so I had an idea, but I showed what they have lately.
We, like this event that we're doing right now, no, but the time before this, yes, we did.
I was going to say, the Sears kids go, come pretty often, don't they?
They do try to, yes, yes.
I know the Parks and Rec provides?
That's correct, yes.
Provides food for them, and that's what they, they just work for food, so.
So if you have?
Pretty high charges on there for the floor removal.
Would there be two rates then, a rate if Parks and Rec have to do it themselves, or the city has to do it themselves versus Sears kids doing it?
We've got it set in for a standard rate for, no matter, whether we do it or who's?
So if we do it, we're going to lose money on that event?
We should be, yes, we will, to be honest with you, yes.
I'd recommend you have two rates, so we don't lose money on events.
Our goal is to try to get them down and not have to take them up and down as much.
Yeah.
That would certainly be helpful.
Park department's floor, right?
I don't know, I think the city itself purchased that floors.
It was a joint, a joint thing between that's the park department.
I think that was an ARPA purchase, wasn't it?
They can't hear.
I think the purchase of the basketball floors was an ARPA-funded purchase.
Yes.
So when you put the floor down for the park department?
Correct.
Do they pay you to do that?
No.
So that comes out of your budget, then?
It does.
Do you get anything from the park department when they're having events there?
They, as far as events itself, we run concessions.
Okay.
I make a motion to move to the voting session to be held November 17th.
Is it too late to ask for changes in the proposal? Councilman Massingham, you said you were at the meeting, there was extensive discussion about those rates. I mean, we don't need to rehash it all, but?
No, we really didn't discuss much about the park department. You know, I guess my concern is the Coliseum has a really, really, really tight budget, and I'm sure Parks Department do, too, but seems to me they need to help more when it comes to putting down the floors and having events there, and I don't know how much you make off concessions if you break even when they have something there. I mean, I'm glad we're using the facility.
Yeah, I mean, I could go back. I could go back and look at what we bring in on concessions and stuff like that, have no problem. We've got that all documented up there.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know from, you know, one point to where you set up for this event till it's over, how much money was either lost or?
Billy, they can't hear you. Billy, turn your mic straight. There you go.
You know, it'd be nice to know, one way or the other, how much money we either made or lost in each event.
Sure.
Instead of trying to pull it out of the budget, because you can't really gleam all that.
Okay, yeah, we can do a cost, you know, I guess a profit or a loss margin on each event. Yes, absolutely. Don't have a problem with that at all.
That'd be good.
Yes.
That way we can help you more if we need to, or whatever.
I'd be glad to have that, turn that in to Robert, each, at each event.
Yeah.
Won't be a problem at all.
Yeah.
And that could be for any, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be for basketball. I can do that for any of them, definitely.
Yeah, I'd love to see those numbers also, because we want to make sure that we're getting enough revenue in at the Black River Coliseum to make sure it's maintained properly, but we don't want to preclude events coming in because it's too expensive, so I know it's a delicate balance there.
Definitely is, yeah.
I already made a motion.
Do we have a motion now? We need a second to move this?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, our action required. Item A, Bill Number 8654, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for the operation of an independent and assisted living facility located at 3392 Canal Boulevard.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8654?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to operate an independent and assisted living?
to operate an independent and assisted living center at 3392 Canal Boulevard in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to operate an independent and assisted living center at 3392 Canal Boulevard in Popper Bluff.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8654?
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8654 has been adopted. BB, Bill Number 8655. The city council will take action on an ordinance abandoning Drew subdivision and vacating Tower Drive.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance abandoning Drew's subdivision and Tower Drive in the city of Popper Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8655?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance abandoning Drew's subdivision and Tower Drive in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8655 has been adopted. CC, Bill Number 8656. The city council will take action on an ordinance establishing the downtown Popper Bluff Community Improvement District, designated the proposed district as a blighted area, appointing the initial board of directors and authorizing certain action and documents connected therewith. This is a table item. I'm gonna turn this over to Robert to discuss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we have had in recent weeks a number of very productive discussions with members of the community as well as members of the city council. And I think we're making progress on a, a format and some modifications to what this would ultimately look like to, to have that into a better product that we believe would have more support throughout the community. And so, with that progress being made and still working with attorneys to hash out those issues, my recommendation would be to keep this item on the table as that work continues. Want to thank all of those that have taken the time to reach out and offer very constructive thoughts and suggestions on how we can make this a better item.
Thank you. Do you have a question, David?
Yes. The wording here that was just read says that the city council will take action on an ordinance establishing the downtown Popper Bluff Community Improvement District. That's not what, what I just heard. I heard that we're gonna keep it on the table. This says we're going to vote on establishing the district. Can I get a clarification on that?
Well, I, I heard the city manager's recommendation as well. The item has been placed on the action agenda item with the intention or understanding that it would be taken off the table. If there is no action on this action item tonight, it just simply remains on the table. But if there is a motion to remove it from the table, put it, then, and that's an affirmative vote of at least four votes, then it would become an action item tonight. So, I'm not sure exactly what the intentions are here.
Yeah, it's getting complicated.
But currently, it is on the table. It will remain on the table indefinitely until and unless, by an affirmative vote of this council, it is removed from the table. That's step one. Then, step two would be to vote to approve or fail to approve the CID.
Okay, so, if I understand this correctly, we're disregarding the text on the agenda, and we're actually voting on whether to keep this on the table or not. Is that correct?
Or not voting.
We don't have to vote on anything. If you wanna leave it on the table, then that ends the action tonight. If you, if you want to take action on this item, then there must first preliminarily be a motion to take it off the table. That motion has to pass. And then, at that point, it becomes an action item for voting tonight.
Did I understand earlier that you said that the only person that can make a motion to take it off the table is the person who initially made the motion to table the item? Is that correct?
That is correct. And I believe there were four council members that voted to table it. And any of those four can make a motion to take it off the table.
Okay.
With that being said, I move that we take Item CC off of the table and take action on it.
I second it.
So, this'll be a roll call at this point?
Correct.
Roll call vote. Clerk Phelps?
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Excuse me. Now, we're ordering to take it off the table, correct?
We're ordering to remove it from the table to consider, or to move it to a vote.
Okay, okay. Just make that clear. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Laurie.
Oh, that's okay. Councilwoman Horton?
To take it off the table and do a vote tonight, yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
No.
Mayor Cornman?
No.
We have five yes votes.
Okay, so, the motion carries. I guess the next step will be if it's passed or it failed.
We take action on it. A motion to adopt would be the next motion.
Okay, so, yeah, motion to adopt. So, I need a motion to adopt.
A motion, excuse me. A motion to read and then ultimately...
We're going through the whole bill process again.
Correct, correct.
A motion to read.
I make a motion for first reading, Bill 8656.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance establishing the downtown Popper Bluff Community Improvement District, designated the proposed district as a blighted area, appointing the initial board of directors to the district and authorizing certain actions and documents in connection therewith.
Make a motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance establishing the downtown Popper Bluff Community Improvement District, designated the proposed district as a blighted area, appointing the initial board of directors to the district and authorizing certain actions and documents in connection therewith.
Do we need a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
I move for adoption.
Go ahead.
I move for adoption.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Go ahead.
I'm just saying that, I wanted to say that, you know, there's been considerable interest in this from the public. And there's been a group of property owners and business owners that... I'm sorry. How's that? Better?
David, bring your mic up. I think that's the problem.
How's that? Better? Okay. There's been considerable interest from the public, you know, private people, business owners and property owners to, to work on this, as Mr. Nodelle said. And there's still a lot of difference of opinion how to proceed. And this vote here will allow that group to proceed with, with, you know, new wording if, in fact, this is, you know, not continued. So, I appreciate the work that other people are doing. And so, that being said, I'm ready to vote.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps. Before you do, one last thing before you do. Does anybody else have any questions or comments before we get a roll call?
This is the vote to...
Yeah, we need to clarify what exactly...
To approve the CID.
Yeah, it's a yes if you want to approve the CID. It's a no if you do not want to approve the CID, correct? Okay.
No if we don't want to approve it, right?
Right.
Just clarifying.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
No.
Councilman Boyer?
No.